Sustaining fund, okay? That's the way this fund was established years and years and years ago, okay? Which means it has to pay for itself. And it wasn't paying for itself. The general fund was subsidizing it. We were subsidizing it with other tax money to subsidize it. And you can't freeze, you can't freeze the rates. Because if you do that, we're gonna end up, if not us, future councils are gonna end up in the same, with the same problem, facing the same thing. And the residents will end up with the same problem. Because the future councils are gonna have to turn around and raise the rates even higher than what they've been projected. And it, and it, and it all is because you do have all of the costs that are associated to it. And I think it's really important that, you know, especially like the residents, that they do understand that, you know, it is. It's not just the water that comes out of your tap. It's all the pipes in the ground, both your water, your sewer. That's two separate sets of pipes. They run through forty-three miles of ground, if not more, in this community. Um, you know, they have to be replaced periodically. You've got all the people that maintain those services. You've got, I mean, they're just, you can go on and on and on with the list of things. And it's not a cheap operation. Believe me, I wish there was a way that we could. Because my wife is one of those that during the summer months does a lot of planting. And when I get my water bill, we always have a, a large disagreement about watering. And it's because, you know, the rates. But I understand, I mean, you know, I do understand that it's not just the water that she's putting in the ground, you know? And maybe that, if we're gonna look at anything, maybe that's the area that we should look at, is the summer months. Is there a way, maybe not so much on the water, but could we offset, because when you, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way it works is, the amount of gallons of water you use determines the amount of sewage. So maybe there's a way that we can look at during the summer months, offsetting some of the cost, the sewer rate cost, okay? Which would, which would, you know, effectively put money back in people's pockets. So if you go out and you fill up a swimming pool, and you don't call it in, you know, and get the special meter, because you can do that, okay? But if you don't do that, and you, you put in twenty thousand gallons of water in a pool, okay? You're not gonna get charged for twenty thousand gallons of sewage. You know? Maybe there is a way that we can, we can talk about that. I think that's something we might wanna look at during budget time.
I'm in agreement with that, and that's where I'd like to see this go, that at budget time, we look at possibly doing either the twenty-five dollar rebate, or we look at the program of, of sewage, and how we can, um, to, to make it fair for the people during the summer months, to do the sprinkling, to, to look at a variety of different options. Alderman Wesley.
One drawback I have on that, and here we get into the problem then. The enterprise fund is there to, to stay the way it is. It shouldn't be touched. Now we're looking at changing rates in that enterprise fund, which should not be done. According to what I understand it, if the water fund is set up for enterprise fund, that money should not be touched. That's what it's earmarked there for, for sewer and water, and it's enterprise fund. Am I correct?
That's right, Alderman Wesley, but the rates change every year.
I understand. But now we're talking about lowering the rate for the summer months, so now we're going to play Mickey Mouse with the enterprise fund.
Staff could, could certainly investigate, is doing a complete rate study, and possibly talking about having tiered rates. Right now, the city's rate structure is relatively simple. We have a rate per thousand gallons for water, and a rate per thousand gallons for sewer. And we have some flat rates for the sewer-only people. But we do not have, for instance, tiered commercial rates, which many communities do have, depending on the size of their meter, and whether they have compound meters. So those are all possibilities. I'd have to look into how much that would cost us to, to basically study. But there are other ways to derive the same amount of revenue. And, and, um, having different rates for different times a year might be a possibility too. Although, if you reduce in the summer, and you still have to get the same amount of dollars out of a particular group of households, you'd just be raising the rate at other times of the year. I mean, it would be, would all have to even out in the long run, for the fund to, to balance itself.
Right. If you reduce the rate, that means that account will then go below, okay? And the count should be stabilized at what comes in out. It should not go below that account, because that's what the money's there for. That's why I'm saying, to consider doing a rebate on seasonal, no. Because enterprise fund needs to be level at the rate that it's supposed to be. If, then due to one, at the budget time, then look at a rebate of one time, and that's it. But the fluctuate during the summer and that, that's gonna throw that account totally off. And you can't tell me it ain't, because it is.
And, and just to be clear, what I was speaking of is regarding summer usage, is for the people that do sprinkling in their yards, or flowers their garden, and then they're still charged for, for the sewer rate coupled with their sprinkling rate, and that's not fair to the people that water and, and, and water their grass, that they're still charged for sewage when they're not actually using their, the sewage. Alderman Suback.
Right. It's not playing Mickey Mouse with the rates. The rates are the rates. It's just doing a more accurate accounting for the sewer usage in the summer that gets inflated because of extra watering that takes place in the summer. That's all it is. And again, I think it should be discussed during the budget.
I'm gonna call on, on a few more, and then I'm gonna ask that we bring this back up at budget time. Alderman Toleman.
Yeah, just, just one thing. I guess, Alderman Wesley, I just wanna make sure I understand. So then you would not support free, doing a freeze of the rates, right?
Well, no, I, I checked.
Okay. I just, okay. I just wanna make sure I understood.
Any other discussion? Okay, then, Ms. Powers, can we revisit this at budget time? Thank you. Item for information, well, the, the action taken was to roll back to the oh-four, oh-five rates, uh, for oh-six, oh-seven.
Could we hold on?
Yes, we did.
We did.
Did we? Okay.
Next item, items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, financial software vendor selection. Item B, payroll outsourcing. Item C, update on water billing, usage discrepancies. Item D, two thousand seven, two thousand eight budget preparation. Are there any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, aren't you lucky? You get to listen to me twice tonight. Since, since the chairman is not here this evening, and I'm the vice chair, I will be taking the planning, zoning, and building committee, like to call it to order, let the roll call, or let the minutes reflect, the same people are still present. And at this point, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November ninth, two thousand and six.
Second.
On a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item we have tonight is case number zero-six, TA fifteen. This is COWD text amendment. This to eliminate requirement of court reporter at zoning board of appeals meeting. Who, somebody gonna address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you in the staff report is just a reiteration of past discussions we have had here at committee and council, and having forwarded to the ZBA for consideration. And that was presented, excuse me, on November twentieth. And based upon the information that was published and presented at the public hearing, which was conducted prior to the regular session of the ZBA, the board members made a recommendation to city council to approve the request for the text amendment, eliminating the requirement for a court reporter's presence at the zoning board of appeals meetings. The vote was unanimous by the ZBA.
Okay, I'd like to take that a little step further. Well, first off, I'd like to make a motion to concur, well, no, before I do that, I, I wanna take it a step further. In their report, they came up with five, five items, okay, notations, that I'd just like to bring up. And some of these, I think, should be incorporated into the motion, and some, I think, just general. You know, the first was that audio-visual equipment used to tape the zoning board of appeals public hearings be checked prior to each meeting. That's already given, that's done. My understanding is that's already done.
Yes, that, I believe that was elaborated in on the Assistant City Manager's memorandum, dated eleven-twenty-seven of oh-six.
And then, you know, that's, the staff is already trained. I'm not worried about that. And as far as the compact discs being made available to any board member, that's always been standing practice, as I understand.
Absolutely, it is current practice.
The only item I see on here, really, well, there's another item that says the staff will look into the possible acquisition of a standalone audio equipment. I'm not sure exactly what they were looking for with that, if somebody was at the meeting.
Assistant City Manager Murmus would like to address that specific issue.
Okay.
All that, all that would be is a...
Tape recorder?
Souped-up microphone tape recorder, like we have in exec session, but a higher quality.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that's a good, we probably should do that, just as a backup.
We're getting price quotes on...
Okay, okay. Then the next thing would be that a petitioner may elect to provide, at his or own expense, a court reporter, and the provisioner, and the petitioner will provide two certified copies of the official court reporter's transcript of such hearings. Those copies will then be retained by the city clerk as part of the official record of each case. I think that's a good one. I would include that in the motion. So at this point, I would make a motion to the text amendment to, to eliminate the requirement of a court reporter at zoning board of appeals meetings, or hearings, and that, A, that petitioner may elect to provide, whatever it says under number five, okay? Uh, 'cause I don't wanna repeat it again. Do I have a second?
Second.
On a question. Mayor Johnson.
For the, the small items, the patio enlargement, whatever, a large portion of the fee for the variance, what was it, like five hundred bucks or something, was covering the court reporter. Will there be a reduction in the expenses to the citizen on some of those smaller, almost housekeeping items?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, that could be a consideration by council. It's all deemed acceptable if, if the council so wishes or desires, we can certainly do that in those specific instances. But I do believe during the discussion period, when it was previously presented at council, the discussion was that the fees were, were to remain the same, would have been, would remain the same insofar as the increase that was proposed at that time. So we wouldn't be looking at any additional cost items to be added during that period. But if council so wished on these minor items, to reduce that fee, we...
I just wanna raise a point for discussion. It's for you to set that policy.
Yeah, let me, if I could...
And my point is, I think that was already built into the fee we were charging. If we're eliminating that requirement, should we pass on the savings, is the question.
Well, I think, I think, and I'd like to get an answer on this first, okay, before we address it further. But I thought that the court reporter, when we're talking about the court reporter, that's the person that comes in and does the steno, right? I thought the only time we used that person was for specific cases. In the case of, in the case of, they were here the entire meetings?
Well, they were here during the public hearing section.
During the public hearings, only?
Correct.
Right. And that's where we were, we're eliminating from, is from that public hearing piece. So if somebody came in, as the mayor had mentioned, for a patio, there wouldn't be a public, would there be a public hearing on that, on a patio?
There would still be a public hearing, but with respect to the recording of the, what transpired at the hearing, that would be on the, on the DVD.
Okay. No, no, I understand. I just wanna make sure that I understand, so that we're all, okay. So then I would agree with the mayor, then maybe we should...
Unless, you know, unless that person had, had requested a court reporter, which then the cost would be borne by that individual.
Right. But we're talking about, I mean, in most, in most cases, I mean, it was, it was, in most cases, how many times was it every meeting that we had the court reporter? I guess that's, that would be my question.
Correct. Every meeting.
So there was a court reporter at every meeting? Whether or not we were having...
I can't remember any that there wasn't.
Okay, whether or not we were having a public hearing or not?
Well, no, they were only present for the, for the public hearings portion.
Okay. So wouldn't it be just those items that we would, we, if we were gonna look at reducing any kind of fees, wouldn't it be just those items that potentially could, look, we could look at? I mean, it's, it would be really tough to try and break out, you know, which is, which isn't. I don't know. But if you wanna bring it, if the, you know, if the committee decides that we wanna bring it up at a future date for discussion, I don't have a problem with it. Alderman Suback.
We just raised them. I don't think we've seen the effects of, from a staff level or a revenue level, as to what those increases are gonna do for our bottom-line budget. Because this is, we eliminate the court reporter, guess what? Staff's gonna get an increase next year, as far as wages. Health insurance is gonna go up. So what will happen is, we reduce, we increase the fees, and we eliminate the court reporter, and we say, okay, we're gonna bring the fees down for the small variances. Quite honestly, and I had not seen a small variance in the last probably two or three years, between applying the seventy-five percent rule, everything else, not many things are very easy. And quite honestly, usually when people come in on their own, without an attorney, there's actually more taxing time on staff. And staff doesn't charge them extra for that. So I, you know, my position is, leave the fee the same. If all of a sudden we see this big surplus of money in the building department, then at that point, we can reduce it. But right now, let's, we just increased the fees to get them consistent with other communities. So let's wait before we reduce it back.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What we can do is sometime during the, the beginning of two thousand and seven, we can certainly come back with a staff status report, and with some commentary with regard to the fee structure and how things are working out.
Okay. Alderman Chalky?
Yeah, if you go to those meetings, the hearing part is ninety percent of the evening, and the planning commission is a very short thing anyway, ten percent or less of the meeting. So if you're talking about a court reporter, you're talking basically a hundred percent of the time.
Thank you. Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of eliminating the court reporter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item we have is a report and recommendation. This is rental housing program implementation with policies and procedures. Who's handling this one, Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we're going to have Ross Clicker, the Community Economic Development Assistant, give the overview report in the agenda action summary on the, the program, as well as the, the drafted, the draft ordinance. And I'll turn it over to Ross. Thank you.
What you have before you is a draft ordinance of a rental housing program that I'm actually quite familiar with. Prior to my coming to Wooddale here, I was employed by the village of Streamwood, as in one of the roles that I had there was to oversee and enforce their rental housing program. This ordinance is basically their ordinance, which Streamwood had taken it from the village of Wheeling. The reason that Streamwood had taken it from Wheeling, and I am taking it from Streamwood, is that this ordinance has been legally challenged and upheld. Especially when you're, when you're talking rental housing, and doing an inspection of the interior premises, you wanna look as to the precedent, what's out there, what is legal, what is not legal. This ordinance that is before you, has, as I said, has been tested, has been upheld, and it treats rental properties as businesses, as they should be, in my opinion. The rental property owner does seek a, or does obtain a profit off of running this, just as any business, small business owner would, or any business owner would, and should be licensed as such to be operating a business within Wooddale.
Okay. Marshall? I mean, Alderman Suback?
This is something that has been long overdue for Wooddale. I've been requesting this for quite some time. I thanks Ross for getting this pushed through. You know, the housing stock in Wooddale is the most important thing we have, and probably the biggest complaint we get is with respect to overcrowding, and also issues of property maintenance. And we are more proactive with respect to our housing inspector going around, and I think that the amount of calls we, that at least I have seen, have gone down. But we continue to have some of these rental properties, which a lot of them are single-family homes, that kinda become the eyesore in the community. And we get calls of, hey, there's been six bags of leaves out front for, you know, four months, and nobody's really doing anything, or, you know, the roof is dilapidated. We have some on Central Avenue near Montrose, that my neighbors continually ask me about, of, you know, what can we do for those? So this program should be similar to an enterprise fund, should be self-sufficient. It should be the people that are using it, should be the ones paying for it, even though all the residents of Wooddale will benefit from it. So I think that staff time, eventually, Wooddale will have to hire another inspector to actually do this program. And so therefore, the amount of fees we charge need to be close enough to cover that cost of that inspector full-time. When I discussed this with Ross originally, I had thought, well, it'll be a heavy item for the first couple of years, and then it certainly should dwindle off after some time. But Ross had a good response, he should share with the community, committee as to that, that's not the case, that once you get started in this, it actually should be increasing.
Right. One, the, the amount of enforcement in that doesn't drop off. You, you try to get the properties up to a certain level, it will take a few years to get them up to an acceptable standard. Not saying that there are properties that aren't to that acceptable standard as it is. However, as the codes change, as new protective measures are, are introduced, one of the measures that was recently introduced, that would be part of this program, would be as a requirement for all, for all rental property to have a carbon monoxide detector. These are inspections, these are purposes to go in, to check, to maintain, to make sure that the properties are maintained. And actually, what we see after, after this program will be initiated for a few years, is that the property owners themselves will see this as a, as a benefit, because they will then be able to, to say to prospective tenants, I have a licensed property with the city of Wooddale. They have said that it is an acceptable property to their community. And they, the property owners themselves actually see it as a benefit and a selling point that they can use.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, some of the days that were in the violations is, like failure to vacate after sixty days. What was your reasoning behind using sixty days as opposed to thirty days? Because one of my thoughts were, by time we're able to issue them a ticket, by time they get into Addison Field Court, there's gonna be time that's passed, and sixty is quickly gonna become into a hundred eighty. Prosecutor's a pretty good guy, he'll be lenient first time, and next you know, it'll be six months before actually they're required to get out. I was thinking more along the lines of a thirty-day window, to get them out before a ticket is issued.
We had, again, when I was in, in Streamwood, we had looked at the different timeframes of thirty days, sixty days. The sixty is, has been the, the, that's actually the, the aspect of this ordinance that has been challenged the most in, in the courts. That sixty days is an appropriate amount of time, that if a tenant was put in, given notice on their door, or through certified mail, that their structure cannot be occupied as rental property, that within sixty days, they should be able to obtain housing somewhere else.
But as I'd be concerned about the tenant living in there, I don't wanna stop the prosecution from issuing tickets, you know, sooner than that point. I don't want it to be sixty days that if, if they don't have this license, or they didn't abide by the inspection, and they are in violation, we should be able to issue a ticket immediately. We should give them, you know, your seven or fourteen days' notice, and then John Forrest should have them in housing court in Addison, immediately. Even though the tenant might not leave for sixty days, that fifty-dollar minimum fine up to five hundred dollars a day should kick in as soon as possible.
And those would be happening concurrently? Yes.
After the sixty days, or...
No. It, when the notice is placed on, on the, on the door regarding the, the necessary, that the tenant cannot occupy the, the premise anymore, the citations would have also already been issued to the property owner.
I'll yield, but I do have some more questions, if anybody else wants to jump in.
Roger, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the positive points of this program too, as Ross had alluded to, is the fact that if the individual building owner, apartment owner, apartment building owner can show a clean bill of health, so to speak, to his insurance company, there oftentimes is a reduction in the rate, because they are deemed to be in full compliance with a city-regulated program. So that, that is a cost savings to the owner.
Anybody else? Alderman Wesley?
Number I, with the number of dwelling units per building, one to five, is that, if you have five units in a building, is that one unit you're gonna inspect, or is that...
That would be one unit that would be inspected in that building per year. That would be the, the unit that would be chosen, would be the cho, choice of the city. It would not be the choice of the landlord. And it, there's also provisions in here, that if while doing the inspections in the multiple-unit buildings, there's conditions that arise, that the inspector feels that other units need to be inspected, that you, that inspector can make that call, and determine that an additional twenty percent of the units need to be inspected. If doing those inspections, the same similar problems are, are discovered, the inspector can make the determination that the entire building does need to be inspected.
So more or less like, let's take Orchard Lakes, it's complex, or I don't know how many units they got there. Is that going to be in one building, or you're going scattering, pick each building different?
It would be, they have, Orchard Lakes has...
Because you said seven, is that gonna be seven in one building, or are you gonna take one in that building, one in another building?
It would be, it would be per building. So if, if each building has, like, in Orchard Lakes, there's five buildings that have thirty-six units. In each of those five buildings, we would inspect five units.
Okay. My other, if, you know, my, my other question is, what is the fee structure that you're looking at to launch this program?
The fee structure that is in the ordinance that we have, is written in here, is the initial license would be a hundred dollars per unit, or per building. If the building has multiple units, it would be a hundred dollars, plus then twenty for each unit. However, if the, if the goal is to be an enterprise fund, that, or an enterprise-type structure, that this, these, these fees would cover the cost of the inspector, we anticipate that that would, that would cover about half the cost of an inspector. So to cover the cost of an inspector, the fee would have to be two hundred for the initial unit, and then forty for each unit, in excess of one.
I, I agree on that. I think we need to up that fee, you know, for that perspective. And the other thing is, with this code, when you inspect it, it's also got to do, if you have an overcrowding ordinance, I mean, if you go in there, you have overcrowding. Now, I, I spoke to you earlier this evening about how they figure how many people should be in a house.
Correct.
And you said a child is considered a...
Under, under the current city of Wooddale code, a child under the age of thirteen is considered to be a half a person.
Okay. So in lieu of that, what we need to do in, in order to, I mean, we could pass this, you know, pass this tonight and that, but we also need to, before we launch this program, I think we need to change the ordinance for that half a person. You know, I think we need to look at changing the ordinance too, and do them all at the same time. Because like we talked about, a half a person is, you know, that's, that's nothing. So, I mean, I think we need to up the fees, because it's gonna have to be enterprise, and it's gonna have to be funded at one time, because, or discussing a budget and try and move some money there, or do something there. But I just don't think the fees, in my point, that it should be up. Because you know what? These tenants are, and you can't tell me Orchard Lake ain't making a killing right now for their rent over there. So, or, or any apartment buildings for, so I, I like to look at upping the fees, and, and see where it would cost, if we hire another guy for this project, and what it would offset, and what we got based our fees off of. That's what I would like to look at.
I think one of the first things that we have to decide, and John will call you in, you in a second, okay? One of the first things we need to decide, that probably is a, is a council at some point, is, do we wanna make it an enterprise fund? I mean, it's, it's been thrown out, that that's what we wanna do, but, but, or use it in, that, that this should pay for itself. I mean, from my perspective, you know, I, I agree with what Alderman Suback had said earlier, that this is gonna benefit the entire community. But the people that should pay for it are the people that are, are renting out the homes and the apartments, and, because this service that's gonna be provided is directly and specifically for them. It's not going to, it's not gonna really benefit, you know, this individual that we hire is not gonna benefit anybody else in the city. So I don't have a problem with looking at what, you know, and maybe that's what we need to do, is go back and look at what our, where, where is that break-even point? Because maybe, you know, I know, Ross, you just said it's two hundred dollars and forty dollars. Is it, or isn't it? Do you know what I mean? It's like, we need to know exact numbers, so that when we do the ordinance, we can, we can make sure that we have, so that, because we don't want it to be a fund where we're making money in the fund. That's not the idea. The idea is, we wanna make sure that we're protecting the, the people that are living in those, those homes, and those apartments, so, and, and the neighbors, and the neighborhood. So we wanna make sure that it just covers... So, we want to make sure that it just covers its own cost. So, maybe $200 isn't the magic number, maybe it's 190, you know, maybe it's 195. But until you guys, unless you've already done this-
We've done, done much of the initial work.
Okay, well, then, then you, that's good. Then you got to share that with us, so that we can, we can look at it.
Yeah.
But before you do, I didn't want to take John's thought away before he loses it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Alderman Wesley about raising these fees, and the discussion from, from the other members of the council. The other fee that I would like to raise would be the reinspection fees, where you go to number J. Right now, it's listed as $50, which I think might be okay for the first reinspection, if it would be required. But I think any subsequent inspections after that, we should raise the reinspection fee to possibly $200 or even $300, as a little more motivation, because again, we're talking about spending staff time, having to go back. And as we're all aware, usually, the, the best motivator in this type of a situation is hit somebody in the pocketbook. So, if we have to go back a third or a fourth time for reinspections, we should make it worth our while, and also give a little incentive to the, to the landlords.
Don't we have, don't we have though, as part of, if, if you go in on an inspection, and they don't pass it the first time, don't we issue them a notice? Isn't there part of this, that we're going to issue them a notice, and then if they're in violation the second time, isn't there a fine? I mean, like, you know, like on some of the other zoning that we do, or housing?
That's almost taken on a case-by-case basis. I mean, every case is different, there's none, no two the same.
So, would you look at a graduated? I mean, I would rather see it, if you go back, if you go back a, a second time to inspect, and they haven't done what they were supposed to do, okay, I would rather say from that day, you know, until you're in compliance, you're automatic, you're going to get hit with a, with a hard charge, okay? On a daily basis, until it's brought into code. Because, you know, you could tell them, and then if you've only added $100, you know, you go back a week later, and they're still sitting there going, "Well, you know what, it's 100 bucks." I mean, you know, depending on, on who it is that you're dealing with, you know, if it's one of these big apartment complexes, you know, 100 bucks is nothing, okay? You know, I mean, maybe the, the person that owns the home, it's different, but maybe we need to look at some kind of a structure there, that you can go, and you can say, you know, after that first, second inspection, if they're not done, boom, you know, you're going to get hit with a hard fine, and, you know, it's going to be there until you, you know, and it doesn't have to be $500 a day, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's $20 a day, maybe it's 30, I don't know what the number is. But come up with a, a good reasonable number, and, you know, until they bring it into compliance, so that, that way, you don't have 50 different layers of, you know what I mean, of, of fees, you know?
Yeah. I mean, our existing codes already do have allowances in that. I mean, if compliance is not achieved within the timeframe specified, whether it be from an inspection or a field correction notice, yeah, we are allowed to issue citations daily, each day is considered a separate offense.
Okay.
So, you know, that is one avenue that's, that's open to us to use.
That would be my suggestion, is that we, we look at that, rather than, I mean, I like the idea, John, because I agree. I mean, if you have to go back a third or fourth time, there's a problem. And you're right, the only way that unfortunately, those people are going to know that, that we're serious, is, is to hit them in the pocketbook, you know?
Correct.
And I, that's why I think, you know what, after the second time, you go back, and it's still not corrected, you know, we should have another vehicle in place that says, "You're fined until you fix it."
Well, we've instituted the higher reinspection fees sometime ago with the business license.
Now, I mean, now, again, it's like you do today, when you go in and you talk with somebody, and you issue them a field correction notice, and they say, you know, "Well, I need a couple of extra days," or "I need, you know, to get," I mean, I know you guys work, that's how we work, because we, we've done that. But it still should be there, because you will run into that person that's going to, not going to care, you know? And the only way they're going to care is when you hit them in the pocketbook, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Suback?
I, I think there's a fine line on the fees. I think it should be paid for by itself, it should be self-sufficient, even though all the residents do benefit. The bottom line is, if everybody kept their property, cleaning rental properties is up to code, we wouldn't need this program.
Agreed.
But we, if we have it too high, people won't register for it. So, and in my biggest complaint, I get a lot, in, at least in the first ward, was the single-family homes that are rented. And those are going to be hard to find out which ones are rented, and which ones are not. So, I think, you know, I'd like Ross to maybe look at the fees of, you know, in the 150 range for the single-family homes. But as far as when you go to dwellings per unit, if it's a three-flat, right now, it's the number of dwellings to be inspected is one, they all should be inspected. And a, a three-flat should be, it should be like the 150 for a single-family house, and then, you know, $75 or whatever per unit each one. Each one of those should be rented, because if I have a three-flat, and I know John's coming out, and he always checks number 201, I have my multifamilies in 202 and 203, having six people, nine people in there. So, I mean, so the idea is, you want all these to be inspected, and they should pay for each unit to be inspected.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. What we're trying to do is, is start and set this into motion, and with your input and suggestions, we will implement these as we go along. This is based on what other communities are doing and their experience, and we share the same concerns that you share. Currently, we don't have the mechanism to do some of the things we really need to do, and we're getting an awful lot of complaints. We don't even know, for example, how many rental units we have. We're going to start out, and we're recruiting right now a full-time inspector, and this may, this may require two full-time inspectors as we go along. And what we would do is, as, as we continue to get into the program, and we need to tweak this ordinance, or, or look for increases in fines, we will bring those to you. So, at this time, we're, you know, we're just starting out, and I think maybe Ross wants to talk about some of what he's found.
But, Mr. Mayor, yeah, Mr. Mayor, let me just ask you a question. I mean, if we approve this as it is, though, okay, you're looking to bring somebody in. Is this going to be able, the way this is right now, with the fee structure that's in here now, is it going to be able to pay for itself? And it's not. It's not. So, we need to, we do at least need to up some of the fees, right? I mean, and I think that's, I mean, because I don't, I haven't heard any questions about anything that's in a document, okay? I mean, other than, other than the fees, or maybe the mayor's got something. But so far, I mean, the majority, all it's been about is the fees. And, and wait, before we finish, Russ, once again, I apologize. I'd like to ask the mayor for, for his input.
I just have a question. Okay, I like the concept. Is there any problems with us as a non-home rule community implementing this?
None, nope.
Because I note in here that you don't allow any month-to-month leases. We legally do that?
I can verify that, but it's my understanding that we can.
And then I have a question on implementation. If there's a situation where you declare the license is revoked, and then we post it, and all the tenants have to move out, but then the landlord still has the opportunity to appeal the revocation, but in the meantime, the building is vacant, can he go ahead and enforce those leases against somebody that people have moved out? If he wins his revocation?
Through the Illinois Attorney General's Office, the rental standards, from my understanding, is if the landlord cannot provide you the facilities to live in, you do not have to provide the rental to him.
But if he appeals it, as he's given the right here to do, and then he wins the appeal? That there shouldn't have been the revocation in the first place, but in the meantime, all the tenants have moved out pursuant to our notice, and it's a vacant building. Has there been any problems in implementation like that in Streamwood or Wheeling, or?
None that have come up. Again, the revocation and the posting of the unit is an absolute last resort. It's, it's never a desirable situat, desirable thing to do. We don't want to put people out of their units. It's not the role of this, of the goal of the city. It's to provide a better living environment for them. So, the, the notice is a last resort, and again, the city would not have the actual authority or power to put someone out of the unit unless the court were to order that.
We'll, we'll get back to you again, Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless, of course, it is a life-threatening situation. One of the things I would like to point out in the, is the fact that there are a few occasions during the year where the inspectors are out inspecting a premises for general building permit inspections. And in the past year and a half or so, we have found instances where individuals have installed a new furnace and neglected to provide a flue to the furnace. So, all of the carbon monoxide is filling the house, we had to have that house vacated. We have had instances in the past where people have installed gas-fired hot water tanks without a flue. And those were, a couple of those instances were in the overcrowding situations. But one of the things that I would like to at least caution council on is the fact that when this program begins, it is going to be very tedious, and it might become a minor nightmare to begin with, because there'll be a variety of different complaints coming to council members and other individuals on staff. But the thing is, is that it's something that has to be done, and also too, just in order to keep our community viable. The other thing about that too would be, there are going to be instances, as I'm sitting here talking to you, where we are going to have to possibly immediately post the building as uninhabitable, due to life safety situations or faulty mechanisms. So, we just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that, and we will certainly do our best efforts in gaining this compliance. John, did you have, did you get to make your comment? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I guess Ross, you're going to wait again? Thank you. In, in reviewing the statistics, as far as the estimated rental units we have in the city, and so far, we're roughly 600, but that does not include any rental units that might be in either one of the high-rise buildings, or some of the condominium buildings. What our department's anticipating is that we'll probably need, as the city manager said, one full-time inspector, and probably a part-time, at least a part-time clerical staff person to handle the paperwork that this is going to generate. Joe Johnson, as an aside, I don't know if all of you have met Joe Johnson before, our property standards, property maintenance inspector, he's here this evening. Just as a point of reference, Joe is going to be involved in this program, yet he has conducted 647 property maintenance inspections thus far this year. So, Joe's time is already pretty full, dealing with what we have already, which again, is why we're going to need at least one-